I'd like to have the meeting to order, please. Ms. Bean, would you do us the honors of the evening?
Dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for being with us on this day. Thank you, dear Lord, for bringing us here safely through the rain. Lord, just continue to be with us. Father God, help us to, to listen to what is being said and done on this evening, dear Lord. Help us to do things as right regarding the town of South City. That everything that we do is, that is pleasing in your sight. These are another reason I ask you to listen.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'd like to recite the Town of South City Mission Statement. It's a framework for success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and engaged community. And, Mr. Brown, if you would do us the honor of reciting the Town of South City Division Statement.
Yes, ma'am. South City is safe, prosperous, vibrant community with diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Well, any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no, ma'am, no adjustments.
So I'm on the, on the table of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can see an agenda.
I'll also make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Home Business, Lord.
Uh, there's none.
All right, there's several things under New Business. Uh, 5.1, the demolition ordinance at 704 West Third Street, Schedule B. Page 1, packet four, pages 4 through 17.
Uh, Jack Meadows is here to present the request.
Mr. Brown, Board members, Mr. Andrew. In the packet is our American Pro 10 statement on page four, we have memo. I guess, just to give a little bit of background, it wasn't provided in the memo. We've been actively pursuing our minimum housing priorities over this past year. We identified approximately five about a year ago, shared those with the board. And during that conversation, there was another one that came up and we, we decided to, we, of course, added to our list and pursued that. We gave, uh, the direction that the board gives at the time was to have those minimum housing items that need to be repaired, have those completed by the end of July, first of all. And, uh, but they just come and we can pass. So, uh, during that long timeframe, we began our process of scheduling a complaint notice hearing, which, you know, between 30 days for the property owner to meet with us. And then give them 90 days following that. We scheduled that perfectly so that at the beginning of August, that 90 days would be it, as well as the date that the board and staff and the property owner agreed to, to have the house repaired. So, um, in your packet, just, uh, you mentioned, we're talking about 704 West Third Street. It's at the corner of West Third and North Garden Avenue, it's an existing house. Been there for many, many years. The property owner is Robert Willett. And, um, the, the reason I wanted to look to the packet was on page 12 of your packet, there's an email that went to the property owner just a few days, maybe a week or so before the deadlines. And it listed off some of the items that he were, that were still in need of repair. That had not been completed. So, went from that and, uh, since, since that was the case, you know, working with state code enforcement, they are a professional code enforcement outfit that specializes in minimum housing. So, um, using their guidance, we went ahead and put our demolition orders together. And we're here tonight presenting to the board for their consideration. Um, we have also, uh, and, and just like we do in our normal processes within the companies already, we've, uh, put out a bid to demolish the home and received two bids. And, uh, with the board pursuing the demolition ordinance, we would, uh, do as we have in the past. We would hire an asbestos inspector to do an inspection. If that board comes back with asbestos, we would then, uh, put out the bid of asbestos removal bid. Select the lowest contractor, a low seed contractor, move forth to the bank. After that was completed, get the clearance letter, uh, and put the demolition contractor that selected by the board to work. So, that being said, that's normal process. Where we are with this property tonight, uh, Friday evening, I was on Friday, Friday evening, uh, Mr. Willett came by and did a zoning application to make these repairs. And, uh, this afternoon, I called Chata County Building Inspections, determined that the building permit had been issued for this. And they had, uh, did not receive a call back, so I don't know the stats. I will say this, Mr. Willett's own, uh, zoom with us. If the board wanted to ask any questions of Mr. Willett, he's prepared to answer those. If you'd like to speak with him, but, um, I believe that's all I have. If we have some technical questions that we may need, Dennis Penix of the State Pedestrian Street, I, I'd rather him call, I can call him right quick on my, um, phone, so. But, we don't need him, I can try to answer questions. William's here as well, has some experience with minimum housing, so, um, I can answer quick.
I have one question. First of all, um, what is the tax, are, are the taxes owed on this property?
To my knowledge, the taxes are paid at the court.
Okay. What is the value of the property?
I can check that, I can find out really quick.
Okay. And because I'm, I'm looking at what is the tax value is and what's going to cost the town to demolish it. But that taxes are paid.
Address is 704 West Third Street. It's tax parcel number 16125.
Mr. Robert, are you gonna, uh, if you willing, go ahead and do the repair right away or?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit, and Mr. Willett would be glad to answer additional. When I know of, uh, his intention is, he's, he's, he's hired Mr. Hugo Coletta.
He's hired him?
Hugo Coletta. He's a contractor, done work in, in the area. Uh, and, and I don't know what the steps are for me, Mr. Brown, that's it. He has found a contractor he wants to work with and, and very interested in doing the work. There's no one in the home that will demolish.
Uh, he willing to, uh, I think he's, he's fit, uh, he willing to keep it, keep it up. I understand he wants to have, they're in top.
He doesn't live here in South City and, uh, intentions to keep the property and, and hold on to it. I don't know with anything beyond that or shoes or rent or anything like that.
So Jack, how long's the property been vacated?
I, I would, I would misspeak if I told you. Long, I can remember.
15 years?
Uh, I, I just don't know exactly when he came thinking. Uh, there may be others.
What does do you know? All right, so my question is, why has it gone this long when now we decide we want to fix it? So I guess Robert can answer to that one.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
The house has been vacant for seven years. My mother passed away, uh, just almost eight years ago, but it's still seven years ago.
Curtis is shaking his head, no.
Can you hear me?
Is she living there until she passed away, Robert?
She passed away sev- seven years ago.
I know, was she moving there when it was, when she passed away?
Within a year, yes.
Okay.
She spent, she spent a little over a year in the nursing home.
Jack, can I make a comment? Right here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Barry, you, you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay.
My wife and I live about 100 feet from that house.
Can you step up, Barry, and, and tell your name and, uh, I'm sorry.
Barry Hayes.
I live north yard that, that house. My wife and I live about 100 feet from that house. And, uh, I've lived there 35 years, that house has always been there. And, uh, we liked that house. It adds a lot of character to that block. We don't like the patch of poison ivy in the yard. If the yard had kept up a little bit better, we would love to see that house be repaired. And like I said, it adds a lot of character to the block. If you take it away, it's going to leave a big blank spot there, it's not going to look right. It's about 90 feet compared to this house. And that house doesn't cause us any problems at all.
Yes.
Um, Jack? Jack, could you say the contractor was?
You go.
For letter? Have you spoken with Mr. Coletta?
I have not, I've always talked to Robert.
Is there any confirmation that Mr. Coletta's actually been retained or has just been spoken with?
Spoken with, uh, just as been shared with me. Like I said, I did follow up with the carrying inspection, but did not get a call back.
I'd like to follow up with the Mayor Pro 10's question. You know, I know that the shrubbery and trees, bushes and everything have been overgrown up there for a long time. And I know that this particular property has been on radar several different times. And I know that we have discussed it several different times. And my belief is that someone has been contacted about cleaning, you know, at least cutting the shrubbery back. And in fact, probably five or six years ago, the group of volunteers went over there and just voluntarily started cutting some of the stuff back. But since then, I don't think there has been any activity whatsoever. And my question is, you know, I know there have been letters sent from the town, different things come out. Why, it would have been nice if we could have had some show of due diligence or at least clean the outside of the property up, cut the bushes down, trim the trees back. And, you know, at least dress it up a little bit. Can you speak to that, Mr. Willett?
Yes, thank you. I, I think if you go and take a look at it, you'll, you'll find that it is overgrown. But I also think that you'll see that some work has been done on it. Uh, anytime I've gotten a notice about it, uh, I get on it. I come at least every two weeks and I mow the yard. So, uh, I think my neighbor Hayes said it well, uh, you know, I do know it's overgrown. But part of having the renovations done will also include having the foliage turned back.
Why couldn't we have the, the, uh, bushes and the trees and all that, that could have already been done? And can you tell me why it hadn't been done?
Uh, anytime that I've gotten a notice about things that were needing attention, I've, I've done them. And I think Jack did that for me. Uh, I had a plot in front there that was, I was getting up on the side of the shrubbery. I cut every bit of it back.
Hey, Robert, we can't hear you good enough.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've been saying Jack can probably vouch for me that I have, anytime I've had an issue, that I've gone in and taken care of what needed to be done. I've never been written up for having the grass too high. I come and mow it and I cut the shrubbery as regularly as I can.
Well, Robert, you know, I ride by there twice every day. They just haven't been very much shrubbery cut whatsoever in the last five years. And it, it's just grown, especially on the side next to the, the church over there. It's like a jungle over there, you can't even hardly walk through it. I would have liked to at least seen something happening over there on the outside. Uh, it would at least show a good faith effort that, you know, something was trying to be, to happen with that particular property.
I, I understand how you feel and I agree that it is overgrown. But I also will say that I've come and tried to keep the yard mowed, keep the trash picked up as best I can. And I think if you'll give me the opportunity, you'll see some real change in the property.
We have several people that want to speak to that.
So, yeah, the question I have is, um, you know, it's a pretty extensive list of repairs. Um, do we have a timeframe when, you know, and when the contractor feels that it can be completed? Are we talking 30 days, are we talking, you know, more than that? What, what is, what timeframe are we talking about here?
Robert, can you answer that for me?
I don't have a specific, but I, I think that by the end of the year, you should definitely see a much improved exterior. The idea is to bring the cosmetic portions of the home back up to where they need to be. And you guys assure me that he can do that.
This might be a rude question, but what's our cost on this? Attorney's fees, staff time, what's our cost on this project so far?
Um, as far as to date, uh, I do not have that total.
Yeah, I don't have an estimate to date. Uh, we, we usually start to put that together as we get closer to doing some, some work as we get, you know, if, if the demo ordinance is passed, we would start incurring the biggest bulk of the costs, Lee. Right now, you're talking Williams' time and title search and state code enforcement's time and going back and forth, the notices we have and, uh, those things and.
If we were going to give a 30-day extension, I will, I will be conditioned on repaying the involved costs to the town.
And to go along with that, if, if we don't give an extension, I'd like for there to be some, something in there, some kind of bond or something, some kind of uh, monetary something to make sure that property gets cleaned up. You, you could hire somebody to get rid of that shrubbery and trim it up in 30, 45 days. But I will make, I would like to make sure that there is an incentive to get that done.
Yes, ma'am.
William, can we, uh, if we gave an extension, could we condition that extension on repaying the costs to the town? We deferred this for 30 to 60 days?
You, you, you could do that. The, what you have to keep in mind is if the building permit is issued, that would effectively stay the town taking any more action with regards to demolishing the property. Because of the, uh, once the building permit is issued, they have a vested right to begin the work.
No building permit has been issued thus far.
As far as we know. We don't know. We should ask, uh, the owner that question.
Jennifer, did you find out what the value is? Yes, the tax value is $49,775.
How much is that, is the value of the structure? It breaks it down there somewhere.
It does.
Yeah, it, it does. Um, they have that, the total land improvement is 59,224. But because the house is so old and depreciation, that it's bringing that way.
So it's, so it's actually now your value of the structure?
Yes, sir. So, Robert, once you decide you're going to fix the place, can you?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Robert, can you hear me?
Yes, repeat your question.
I'm sorry. Once you complete the restoration, what's your plans for the tax?
I'm hoping to rent it.
Your what?
Rental property.
Could I ask you this question? Um, and I know you don't live here, but.
Sure.
Why so long? Why so long did you let the house sit without doing anything?
Part of it was the way that my mother left things, the way her estate was. And part of it was the involvement that I've had with my own family. But I assure you that I've been there every two weeks or 10 days over the last year. And I've worked very tediously, I've worked with Jack. I just need a little extra time. I understand about the shrubbery. Mr. Coletta and I discussed the shrubbery. I've got some calls in to get that work taken care of. Just looking for a little extra time.
I understand that. But unlike Commissioner Price, I live by there a lot. Because I live over in Humble Acres and it looks like to me that nothing's been done. Um, I mean, maybe back before the summer started, it looked like somebody mowed the yard and did a little bit to the bushes, but since then, it doesn't look like there's been anything. And I go by there every day, like Commissioner Price.
What, yes.
At least two or three.
I under.
Four or five or six times a day.
I understand that. Um, I was there for about eight hours on Friday. And I left a very large size pile of shrubbery for the city to haul away. And I, you know, I, I'm trying to do the best that I can. And I'm sorry that you haven't noticed that the yard's been mowed or that any of the shrubberies been cut, but I assure you that I've been working on it.
Commissioner, I have a question.
There's not a question, just more comment. It's has to do with the timeframe. Because we have an order, we have a demolition ordinance that we can't act on tonight. If we continue the matter, even if it's made on conditions, you know, as William has said, once a building permit is issued, we're effectively stay until the, the CO is, 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 uh, granted at the end of the permit phase on, on.
Until the permit would expire over time because of lack of work.
Yeah, so either, either the builder gets to a CO or the builder doesn't do anything because he's not paying, that project gets, it's not completed. But, um, in any event, uh, if the board does choose to postpone this, continue it on, whether on condition or not, I think we just need to be aware that with material delays, delivery delays, possibly weather delays, it could be six months to this building process is done and the CO is issued. That's just my opinion. What is worth.
Yeah, I guess, uh, along, along the same lines, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the timeline. We have a hearing 28th day of April and to, to your knowledge, nothing is, I mean, aside from what Mr. Willett says about cutting some shrubbery, nothing has been done, you know, to date. We were 90 days into this, where zero work has been done. A, um, a zoning permit was issued when?
Friday.
Friday. So we've basically 90 days where no work has been done, no effort has been made to, 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 to move the process forward.
Uh, well, I mean, I would, I would want to, uh, do a permit. I wouldn't want to settle around what it was.
Absolutely.
But, um, I'm just putting, I'm just putting that timeframe out there from what I see from talking to builders and delays that occur due to, you know, delaying material delivery that uh, even if we say we want it done in 60 days, once the permit is issued, that's kind of out of our hands.
But we're, we're also talking about years of conflict.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not speaking that.
I mean, and we're talking about, Commissioner Hayes.
I just want to frame that out.
I guess, say it, you know, we come back, I mean, April. So.
I suggest that we, uh, someone ask, uh, Mr. Willett if, whether or not successfully obtained the building permit yet, since that's the only information that we'll have.
Mr. Willett, have you obtained a building permit?
Mr. Meadows told me on Friday that I couldn't obtain the builder's permit until I filed the zoning permit, which I did on Friday. Mr. Coletta. Mr. Coletta told me that once I filed the zoning permit through the city, that he would go to the county to obtain the building permit.
So has the building permit been obtained?
Not, as not as I know of, not this minute, not right this minute, I can't say because I don't know.
Okay.
If I, if I, if I could speak to one other thing, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I know you talked about the timeframe from April. But the issue that I had was finding a person that would do the work. And when I finally found the right person, they are booked up because we had a pandemic. We've had a high demand on, like you said, lumber and on labor. And so I don't have any doubt that when Mr. Coletta tells me that he can be on site and doing work within the next couple of weeks, that that's going to happen. Thank you.
The, the zoning permit was submitted to the county inspection department at quarter 11 this morning. And also copied, and Mr. Willett said, zoning permit has been completed, submitted. I have a copy.
10:45?
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
I don't know if you have space. Wait a minute. I'll tell you, uh, give you what, so then we'll time, if you what you say you're going to do. If you don't do, what is they going to do? Then we'll come back.
The, the recommendation from state code enforcement, Dennis mainly, uh, is who I communicated with today about, you know, where we are and the permit status and that, you know, kind of, uh, changing things if there was no activity, it's a little easier. Uh, Dennis recommends we, uh, consider the, the demolition ordinance.
The state code enforcement agent?
Yeah. And, uh, knowing what has been sold tonight, we, the staff would just ask to give us direction. If it is to work with, uh, Mr. Willett for 20 days, 30 days, whatever that may be, we'll, we'll do whatever the board asks. Uh, if the permits issued, when the building permits issued, our hands will be tied at that point anyway. So we'll just follow the process through that, uh, whether it's a repair to make or it's permits expired and able to pick that back up on work. But, um, my understanding is once the demolition ordinance is passed, it's, 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 it's there. It doesn't go away until the repair is made. And so, uh, William, if you got any thoughts to that, that's, that's my understanding from conversation with Dennis today.
Do you know whether the, that was, I don't really answer. Do you know whether or not the adoption of the demolition ordinance would be viewed as, by the building inspection department, as prohibiting them from issuing the building permit or those things separate? I think they're separate.
I believe it separately. The demolition ordinance is purely identifying that there's a violation of our ordinance or minimum housing code. And this, we've taken proper steps, public hearing or notice of hearing and notified all parties involved. And, and that's, uh, in on itself, that it's intending to correct that violation. And that as you work with the property owner, and they do get a building permit, you, we work with them. And that's current, and that's, and we, we actually have a active demo ordinance on the property on South Sixth Avenue that, that the board adopted. There was an active building permit, they're repairing that home. And it's, it's come along, it's, part of us doing active building permits. So that's an example of where the building permit needs to come after the demo.
I think that's an indication then that I don't know if the building inspection moved, that there was a demolition, uh, ordinance adopted, however, seeing they did and, and issued the building from the, any of that, the town didn't take action. Obviously, once the building permit was issued, so it sounds like the board could adopt the ordinance. But I don't know how quickly the demo would occur. I'm guessing, no, I don't know, or.
Like I said, the suspension process, if, if I had a demo. Like I said, the inspection process, if, if I had a demo, I gotta have it recorded. So I gotta get it recorded at the, uh, Richard Dean's office and then schedule an asbestos inspection. He's, that person's gonna see if there's any asbestos, provide us a report. And then we're not, we, so we're talking, you know, a month, a month and a half before there's a demo leaving possibly.
Okay. Well, that means then you could adopt the ordinance and if he is serious, the owners are serious about getting to work right away, then that makes they need to get the permit right away and it'll just be a matter of, of monitoring that with the building inspector. And in fact, when it is issued, we would forego, uh, demolishing the house. And the natural process will carry out whether or not the building permit expires based on. Jack, you know, did the time change for the life, the, the lifetime of a building permit?
I, I don't know. Six months or a year that, because that, it's one sixty D added the year component. So it could be six months or it could be.
It used to be six, but with all the changes with one sixty D and everything, it might've, it might've changed that. But in any event, uh, if there's inaction for a period of time, then the building permits expires as a matter of law.
I was just gonna say that given that the, uh, adoption of demolition ordinance would not foreclose Mr. Willett from getting a permit, but would allow us to maintain some control and oversight over this project, hopefully culminating in a refurbishing of property, I would be in favor of adopting the ordinance.
Yeah.
That'd be my, my position.
And that's, that's sort of why I, I'm like the rest of us. If there's any way to salvage a house, fine. And that's what we'd like to do. But at the same time, there's been so much time. I don't feel like kicking the can down the road another six to eight months and we'll be right back when we're off. So like Louis said and, and William said, if we can adopt this ordinance, if being placed, there's a timeframe in there for the property owner can start abating something. We can see some due diligence on his part. It would go a long way in persuading a lot of different folks to do something different. And I could support that.
I agree.
If I, if I were to find out, you need, uh, at least in my experience, I didn't know we had one here already, uh, for a demo ordinance to be adopted. And, and you know, what, uh, what effect that would have on the building inspector. Apparently has, uh, had an issue in the other matter. But if I find out differently, uh, until there's either a permanent obtained or the house is demolished, you know, we would have time to bring this up again if I were to find out that there's a legal, a legal roadblock for him obtaining a building. I'm certainly making aware of that.
Any other direction we can stand first?
Do you have a question?
I'm expecting if the building permit is not issued in two weeks or three weeks, when can I send that asbestos inspector in there to do his inspection? I don't want to be.
Do we not need to go ahead and do the demolition?
Yes. I want you, I want you to do the demo ordinance. I just want you to go around this on the way. I want you to give us some direction so that I'm marching that way, way to go first of march. And in a kind way, you know, working, working with folks way.
Well, it just seems to me that if there is asbestos, um, that would be a fact that the contractor would want to know so you can do a proper renovation of the structure. So if I'm the homeowner, Mr. Willett, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but if I'm the homeowner and I'm the contractor going to be getting in around asbestos, I will know that before I get in there. So I would, uh, for me, I would say go ahead and have the.
Just if we redo it, it's gonna be a call center and we're gonna pass on it sometime.
How much is, how much generally is asbestos?
Three fifty.
Three fifty. Let's do, I just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gotta be done one way or another.
So Jack, what do you need?
Let's just follow the question action on page four, Mayor Pro Ten. Uh, considering demo ordinance, consider selecting a demo contractor. Uh, you've got the lowest rate contractor on there and, uh, I think this is probably our taken care of this, some carrier or similar meetings. Consider offering the manager contractor, lowest, uh, little bit asbestos removal contractor if there's asbestos.
I'm like a motion. Before we go on with the motions, should we, should we make sure we, Mr. Willett understands what's happening here? You, you still on that road?
Yeah, I'm still here and, um, you know, I, I heard the concerns about the asbestos and I've already talked to a couple of contractors about that as well. But, uh, I, I do understand what's going on. Jack, Jack has explained it to me as best as he can. Uh, I'd ask you to just give me thirty days and I can show you that some things will happen, especially the shrubberies being cut. I don't, I don't know if your staff is up to date on all of this because I hear some, I hear some apprehension in there, but you guys carry on. But I do understand what you're doing.
All right. You, you understand that we, we're going to do a demolition, uh, ordinance. And there's going to be a timeframe between that and when it actually gets done to allow you to secure the necessary things that you need to do and show due diligence that there is going to be some activity before it is carried out. Are you aware of that?
I am aware.
Okay.
Just to make sure that you understand, uh, what town is going to do tonight. And we just want to make sure you're on the same page where you are.
Well, I, ideally I'd love to have my own attorney, uh, study this. But obviously it doesn't sound like I'll have that opportunity. But, uh, it sounds like.
Uh, Mr. Willett, this is William Morgan, the town attorney. You can still do that even after the demolition ordinance is adopted. And what they're trying to make sure that you understand, I think, is that even if the ordinance is adopted, you will still have some period of time in which to obtain a building permit and, and get to work. And the ordinance then would not be effectuated unless and until the work stopped for sufficient period of time. And you can have your lawyer, you're not concluded anytime from having your attorney look at actions the town has taken. So this would just.
Well, I.
I mean, this will just essentially be in place that if you don't take steps right away, uh, securing a building permit and, uh, you know, the ordinance won't have to be revised. It'll be in place, but that doesn't conclude you can obtain a permit, get, get into work. I don't think the town just wants to tear it down just because we've been this far. If you're a, really are gonna make a good face, everything. Bring it up.
Okay. Very, very good. I, I appreciate those words, uh, counselor. And I do understand and you've gone on the record with those words. I'm fine with this. Thank you.
I make a motion that we, uh, select a demolition contractor listed on the fifth tabulation sheet.
One, maybe?
I hope so.
We'll specify it.
Oh, um. Do we have, uh, do we have any bids from you? I thought we just obtained bids from.
Yeah, we received bids from KBS Earthworks for eight thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars.
Okay.
Green Revolver Landscaping for ninety-four hundred dollars. So that's two.
I make a motion that we, um, select KBS.
I want to add one thing before you vote on that. Yeah. I'd like to see in the motion something indicating that I'm, that we're not to sign the contract. I mean, we need to. I don't want the town to have to, I don't know what the ramifications necessarily would be off the top of my head, but it's likely we may have to pay some amount to the contractor. Um, if we sign the contract. You can go ahead and approve. Selecting and just not issuing the contract.
When we just authorize town staff to engage in contractual negotiations with the lowest bidder?
That would be better and we can make sure we don't sign before.
I make a motion that we, uh, allow town staff to engage in contractual negotiations with KBS Earthworks, Inc.
Is that good?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Second. And the third one is just to authorize a grant to do sound for our asbestos removal contract.
So.
Any questions? One, maybe? Any opposed?
And we will, uh, shed the asbestos inspection. And, uh, we'll keep you abreast as, as we meet, uh, the skies of this. Little house.
Looking forward to see the house. I'm back in a while. All right. So moving on to the state drinking water, Homewood Acres, project. Uh, page eighteen thirty-six.
It's not, it's not going bad. It's all. Hey, hey.
Sorry, this is my second. So, um, Mayor Pro Ten Commissioners, uh, tonight we are asking the board, uh, to consider a resolution to apply for a state drinking water, state revolving fund combination loan grant to improve the water pressure situation in a section of Homewood Acres. This has been an ongoing problem for many years. Uh, and here over the last year, it's, uh, become increasingly worse. Uh, we've had a lot of concerned customers in the area, uh, which led us to have the engineers to go out and monitor uh, certain homes in the area to get readings uh, and establish what the actual need is. So tonight, uh, David Honeycutt, uh, with the Gilling Associates is with us uh, to explain those analysis and the options that we looked at uh, in, in how this could be resolved, uh, you know, and effective for the community.
Before we get started.
Yes.
About, you said about a year ago, it got, you know, some event that happened that caused things to get noticeably worse, right?
We started, yes, receiving a lot more.
If something had to change somewhere.
Well, it's been, it's been that way.
I know it's been that way, but you said something changed. It got noticeably worse. So it makes me think that something happened somewhere.
Right. There were a couple of, there were a couple of residents in the area and customers that they started seeing a decrease in their water pressure. And we, you know, contacted them as we normally would anyone and asked them to have a plumber come out, assess what the situation may be, uh, within their own lines, uh, and so forth. And, you know, they came back and said, well, there were no problems. I believe one of the, the customers ended up having some pipes replaced and did not see an increase. And again, David has the results, you know, we were seeing some, some flowage at the meter uh, that was significantly higher than it was at the house. Uh, so that's why that led us to the, to address the, uh, individual customers and asked them to have someone to look into their, their homes and see what was going on. But, uh, my understanding is it, it's been an ongoing problem for years. And even since they had put the stand pipe in, uh, you know, up around the, the Tanglewood, Candlewood area. Uh, so we've just been trying to figure out a way to, to resolve the issue. And I think we finally come up with.
So how many, uh, houses were surveyed?
I believe it was four, three. Three houses.
Three houses out of, how many in the neighborhood?
There are sixty-seven that will be affected by this, this project.
So I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to figure out what our sample size, our statistical sample size.
Now, are you just looking at the Tanglewood, Candlewood area or on past that?
The, the map is located on page twenty-six.
We didn't tap into the line, whatever I was getting at. We didn't tap into a line somewhere. We didn't add something to the system that caused the pressure to drop suddenly in a year. That's where I was going. All that stuff. I read all that.
No, okay.
Our statistical sample size is three houses?
It was, and also a number of hydrants and.
Two hydrants within that general area there at different times.
The three houses that were looked at were those the three houses that contacted the town because of the water pressure problems?
The, and one across the street. I believe there was one across the street and then two that were on one side. And these were all direct work.
So the three houses, two across streets, so six houses were surveyed?
Three, three houses and hydrants.
Three houses and two hydrants. And one, one of the houses was the, uh, it's been a primary complaint. I guess the one was across the street from that house. Well, it's just, uh, stuff right.
State or state.
Who can, where? For the record.
David, honey, got it from the Gilling.
Did we, David, did we talk to, other than three houses, we didn't go and ask the neighbors, tell you you had the same problem? Something like that?
I, I didn't know for a reason. We did. We, uh, we contacted all the houses around the, uh, the main component. Uh, one on each side over and then went down a couple lower down the street.
And what street was that on?
Uh, Tanglewood. Tanglewood.
Um, so seems like there's a clear problem on Tanglewood. Did we check with any residents on the adjacent streets?
No.
So is this just a, so our problem area is just limited to Tanglewood, I hope?
No, no, the problem is, is kind of the whole neighborhood. Uh, we, we know of other known areas.
That's what I'm getting at. How do, how do we establish the parameters of the problem zone? We just stop the people on one street?
Well, let's let, um, yeah, if, if we can, uh, let David go ahead and present what was looked at um, and how we came to, uh, this resolution for the, the situation. Egan.
Just, um, so that I don't lose that in, that answer within the rest of the, the, the area in general that we're. Am I close enough? Uh, and you gotta eat there. Trying not to run into it. Uh, so the, uh, so I don't lose that answer within the rest of my, uh, information there. The area that we defined to, to serve for the projects is based on the elevation within those streets. As the, uh, as the, the street falls away from the, the tank, we chose the elevation of about seven hundred twenty-five feet and drew a line around the area in that vicinity that was above that elevation to define what's going to have similar pressure to the areas that are, that where we're receiving most, uh, verbal complaints and complaints about the, about the pressure. So, um, and the, to give, what, uh, a little more background there, what we are looking at is a, a project cost eight hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Were, uh, four hundred and fourteen dollars, eight hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, and the purpose of that project is to install a booster pump system in the, at the, uh, at the boot, at the standpipe area and run a small annual line from that out to those sixty-five homes at the highest elevations around the tank. And that will allow us to increase the pressure just in that vicinity. Leave the existing water lines in place, our factor lines, uh, which those are being used to move water from the rest of the water system up to the standpipe and also provide protection as well, uh, to leave those in place, uh, such that the system will operate on, on top of that. Um, by doing that, we can adjust the, uh, that, that area will be served by this pump with a small, uh, small pneumatic tank, almost like a well tank. It gives you a little bit of, uh, of buffer around it. And it allows us to set the pressure in that to a higher, uh, higher pressure than what we're seeing from the tank. Um, and we, we also looked at other alternatives to try to boost the pressure of our own area that because of the elevation difference, uh, from where the tank sits down to the lowest portions of the, of the zone, you end up with a, a pretty wide range of pressures. And the, the piping in the over, in the lower sections of that area are over pipes. Um, and we're concerned that any increase in, in pressure, substantial increase in pressure in that area by, by this increasing the overall pressure in zone, it potentially have water, water breaks and much issues in that portion of the project.
I definitely want to fix people's water problems, but, and I'm not, you know, aside, I'm not an engineer. I just kind of look at it with my. I'm not a scientist, I'm not an engineer, I just kind of look at it with my common sense. I mean, you got three complaints on Tanglewood. Probably there's some issues on the adjacent streets, but instead of knocking on doors and hearing from the horse's mouth, we just look at the elevation grades, why, why, why don't we knock it on doors saying, hey, you got a problem with your water, let me know about it? I mean, it seems we want to talk to the residents to make sure we got the right area, especially since we're going to be putting half a million dollars to fix the project, I want to make sure we're targeting the right area. I want to talk to more than just three houses, which is mean, why, I've been knocking on some doors.
I can, I can attest to the fact that it's just not that area. Um, you know, you know where I live and talk to here in North Carolina, you cannot run wastewater and take a shower at the same time.
I don't even see North Carolina.
It's not, it's not in there.
Yeah, exactly. That's my point. That's my point. I mean, we're looking at elevation grades, we're not.
I think, I think those lines on that street are a part of another distribution system is the reason they were looking at this one as well. In other words, there are various lines coming off, I think it's Dogwood, running up through Homewood Acres as though he had originally mentioned about, if they could boost from the, the pump station, um, then that would have, that would have been ideal for the project, but the problem was the risk factor of what problems it would create in the older lines at the lower, um, areas, uh, within the neighborhood itself. So that's why they picked, I think, seven hundred and something feet.
Yeah, about seven hundred twenty-five feet elevations. And you see the, on the map there, the, one of the lines on Driftwood does come down to the, the, what is the, the high point on West Glen, that, that, when, uh, falls off on the side of that fairly quickly, we are coming down to that, that point to, uh, to that intersection, uh, below that point, like the, uh, the surface, the surface based on elevation, the base of pressure should improve from that point on, but. My understanding of your, uh.
I think Commissioner David was getting a little mixed up too. We talked to more than just three, three is what we done a pressure test on. We, we talked to more people on that street, probably, probably a total of ten neighbors.
On Tanglewood?
On Tanglewood, it said.
No, Driftwood. Driftwood, Driftwood, not Tanglewood.
Tested the pressure on three houses.
So what, what's the, um, um, diameter of the line running on Driftwood?
The, the line.
Is it two inches or four?
So the six inch on Driftwood is the current line.
Okay, what about on the North Wind, do you know?
I know, Chris.
And that's six. So we talked to people on Tanglewood and Driftwood?
Driftwood.
Not Tanglewood? So the three people who called us, who live on, that was a misstatement, those three people live on Driftwood?
All those people on Driftwood, yeah.
So, whether it's Driftwood or Tanglewood, it still gets back to my main point, uh, as supported by Commissioner Brady's statement that there's water pressure on, issues on Glen. Let's do some due diligence, let's put feet on the ground, let's knock on the doors, let's ask the residents what's going on with the water pressure.
Well, I can tell you, they kind of know how some good water pressure at, outside Spickit, never closed to what's inside.
I mean, we, we, we spent a lot of effort, this reminds me of what we, the efforts we went through over in Boland Park neighborhood. Uh, and so, I, I'm not saying we shy away from the problem, we tackle the problem, but we want to make sure we tackle it correctly. We want to make sure we, we address the issues.
Well, the thing is, we, we got to the point, we're looking, trying to put a pump or something under our house and he's got that back. So, yeah, we need to look at the whole area, it's not a specific part of the whole area.
And I, I, I do know that we can certainly look at that, but I think it would be a, a two-phased approach with it. I, I don't think one, one project would actually solve the, the issues in various sections of Homewood Acres.
And it may, it may be a multiple, a, a multiple-phase project, if it's going where I think it's going, and we're doing some combination of note of grant, and we're getting dollar for dollar, and typically, the bigger we go, the more benefit we get, because we get that dollar for dollar. Am I, am I anticipating correctly?
Potentially, however, at this point in time, the cause of the current rates that we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are only looking at a twenty-five percent principal forgiveness, which is the grant part, it's just called something different, uh, under this.
So I'm looking at fifty-fifty on this?
Not on this one at the time, and David can explain why, it is because of the sewer rate being lower, uh, than.
Yeah, they've, they've adjusted the criteria, looking at the median rates within North Carolina as to, to what, uh, towns are eligible for grants first of one, principal forgiveness first of one, uh, just recently came out with that guidance in late July, um, we went to training on it, uh, last, last week before all that, but, and unfortunately, with those, those adjustments and with how much lower the sewer rate is than the, uh, the water rate where, where it puts us right now, it's at twenty-five percent.
Who is the grant slash loan through?
Digital Water Infrastructure, who, who are currently.
North Carolina?
Yes.
Last time, who, who do we usually when we working in, uh, Long Beach Hill? Was it US?
Was it USDA?
Was it USDA or something?
We'll look at some USDA there for.
Have we checked out, uh, other options, or is this the best option that we have to twenty-five percent? Have we looked at USDA?
Right now, um, this is the best option, however, um, potentially in the future, we could look at USDA, but we're currently, uh, as you're aware, uh, trying to secure a, uh, loan through them for the wastewater treatment plant. And, yeah, in the amount of seventeen million, so, um, that's, uh, one of those, I, I don't think we can go at them twice, uh, and so that would be something in the future.
Is there anything, um, upcoming infrastructure bill that we could use to help defray these costs? The federal infrastructure bill that's coming down?
The ARP, directly. The only, the, the only thing we were looking at is, uh, the potential opportunity for at least twenty-five percent. Uh, now, that may change again as well, as we had discussed, uh, previously, I mean, next year, uh, the dollar amount, did you say it was like ninety-two? Around ninety-some dollars for.
Two, thirty percent, yeah, it was like against the ninety-two.
Yeah, because we, we would need to be at, on an average of five thousand gallons, uh, our rates, our flat rates would have to be around ninety dollars, and they're currently at eighty-two. So that's what puts us in the, um, the twenty-five percent category.
Well, even if we can't get, you know, better terms, don't get it all, grateful to get twenty-five percent yields, but even if we can't get better terms and we have to parse it out over phases, I'd still like to know this, the actual, the full scope of the impacted area, because clearly, it goes beyond these streets, based on Mayor Pro Tem's comments.
It's just sort of a burden of issue down in that particular area that are that far away from the cycle, or from the, from the tank. Um, so we, we've done a quite, really water acid inventory assessment project, uh, that we're currently working to wrap up details on, we'll probably be ready to present, uh, that to you at the, at the next meeting. Um, we have done a pressure test in various other areas of the system, but not directly within, just outside of this area, because we're, uh, spread throughout, throughout the system, try to, uh, better define the, the overall system. Um, we've also done some water modeling, uh, worked with the, our department with their hydrant, uh, testing, and utilize that data to develop an overall water model for the system. So that, that water model is a, my, auto representation of what the pressure, load compatibility of the water system, uh, look like. And, and I come prepared to give a full presentation on that tonight, but what that, what that information, it's not, it's a model, it's not a hundred percent accurate, it's hard to, when you talk about going door to door, um, obviously, it's not going to give you everybody's individual situation, but it does generally give us a, a good representation of what we would expect at street level of pressures within the, within the system, that if you go out to, go out to a single fire hydrant, check the pressure there, most of our data, um, in calibrating that model, and within a few PSI of the actual pressure in the system. So, um, so we feel like it's, it's not a hundred percent, but it's a, it's a pretty good representation of, of the system. Um, so that is, with that, with that model, we're looking to try to target maintaining the right pressures within the, within the system. There is another area, at the Sycamore Lake, that's been, I understand, a historical problem, that y'all, uh, the town staff has been aware of, that's been, uh, issues as, as well, but, um, I, I think to some degree, you, you also, you're always going to find some individual homes out in the system that have other more serious issues or have challenges because of, but those may be due to things as simple as the, as the water meter, uh, it being, uh, not, not running correctly, plumbing within the house, it's got some kind of a challenge, et cetera, so it, um, I, I think it's, it's, uh, I think we've narrowed down the area that is most affected by this, that's our, like, it, it does more, yeah, finding so, uh, getting other information, I'm not sure if, is the best way to go about doing that? You, you can survey the entire, you know, the town or that, a whole area outside of that radius, but, uh, you'll probably get a variety of answers.
Well, if you would, you, you've got three pages of graphs here, can you, can you explain that? It looks like it's, it's, it's doing this, but can you just, it might even turn.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I will get into the graphs, most people, well, it also, it's that.
Oh. I think the one you're looking at is on page twenty-three. Yes, I think it is.
First, first one that I've got here, uh, like, location five, Klein Avenue, um, this is at the, the hydrant that's at that location of the intersection of Glen and, and Driftwood there, uh, at the high point. Um, and what you, what you see there in the blue line is the, the pressure that was read through the pressure monitor on and on going, uh, basis over the, over the course of several days. And the, the reason that that line goes up and down is, you see the, the, uh, the thicker trailing line of it is, uh, that's going, going downward, is as your tank is draining, um, the tank, as the tank level goes down, the standpipe level goes down, the pressure goes down in that area. When the pump comes on, it fills the tank back up, and you see it come, come back up, uh, to, to a little above thirty PSI on that graph. So that's, that's generally the pattern in that neighborhood, is it's following that, that tank level as, uh, the, the set points for the pump station on Dogwood fills that tank, so as it comes.
So that, on that particular one, there's almost a ten-pound loss of pressure between, is that correct?
That's only about, uh, it's from about thirty-one down to twenty-six, twenty, twenty-five and a half, so.
Is that?
About five feet.
I mean, I, yeah, all I know about is pressure switch on a wheel pole, and, you know, and it, the pressure goes from sixty down to about fifty and it comes back on. Is this normal for there to that thick of the pump?
That is, that is pretty normal for that type of situation. You always want to sort of cycle water through the tanks, you don't want that tank to be full all the time because the water stays in it and gets stale, so you fill it, some of that water run out, you try to, try to slice through it. And if, if it wasn't for some pressure challenges in that, we might let that actually run further to give it a more, more difference than that. Um, the town, the, the, the operating procedure on that keeps it up there fairly tight, fairly full, just to, to make sure that the water is available for fire, fire protection and to keep the, uh, keep that issue down from the dropping part of the area.
Okay. So, question that I have is, um, what, what is the ideal, or what would be an expected range for a normal pressure in a home?
The, the state minimum at a maximum, uh, maximum demand is thirty PSI outside of fire flow. Yeah, fire flow situation, uh, we're doing about the twenty PSI. Um, more typical minimum is, is in, say, the, or, ideal would be in the forty, forty-five PSI range with that pump, but through per statute for regulation, it's good enough for thirty for that. Okay.
Give me one, please. Do you have one?
No, I've been waiting for it to go on to the next graph.
All right, I, I just want to make, um, I've been living at North Wind probably, one on twenty-five years, and I've been on the board for way of years, but before I was on the board, I remember contacting the town in Door Brower, talking about how we didn't have any water pressure, and they'd always come out and say, well, you've gone at the Spickit, and then nothing was ever happened. So it's been going on for many, many years. So, like Commissioner Payman said, we need to go to the outside of this area and see what other areas want to take.
So, the, uh, the next graph there that's titled Driftwood Drive Water Pressure, has three, uh, three pressure lines from three different locations. One, uh, the top line there is, the gray line is the Hardwood Drive Hydrant, um, so that, that's actually a pressure gauge that was installed, again, on, on fire hydrant itself. The other two are on the, on two Driftwood and, uh, tentative team Driftwood, um, which is the, and those were installed on the, outside the house. And so you can see those, those graphs, uh, those three lines follow each other, uh, based on the pressure again of the tank, uh, the, the pressure at the hydrant is the highest, uh, by about two to three PSI over eleven of two Driftwood, and it, it tends to, to run about six to seven PSI above the pressure at, uh, at the blue line, ten sixteen. But the, uh, at eleven of two Driftwood, you see there, the pressure there is, is pretty steady most of the way through, you see the thickness of the line, it's got a little bit of variation, you turn on with, so it, it's, it's drawn a little, maybe the wiggle there that makes that line thicker, um, but, but it's staying, it's staying pretty constant, you're really not seeing much, uh, much width, much variation there. Outside of the, there's one drop in it down, uh, on September seventh to eighth, and I'm not sure exactly what happened there, there was a, a spike in that direction there that, uh, could just be an anomaly, but, uh, the, within the, the blue line, ten sixteen Driftwood, you see a lot more of those spikes, uh, um, you can see, it, it's severely drops, uh, regularly through, throughout there, uh, and jumps back up, and just it's, uh, it's seeing a lot more variation in that, um, that's likely showing deficiencies within the, uh, within the plumbing system, within, uh, so pressure out of the road is staying pretty constant, but as you, you're seeing more demand and, and fluctuations in the system, it's causing that, that line to, to vary off of a lot.
And based on what you said a while ago, it's sort of the minimum pressure should be right around thirty?
Yeah.
And we don't even get to that on this, this particular graph, do we?
We, we, we barely do up at the, up at the hydrant, so that's the, yeah, once it gets to the, I don't know, against the system pressure is what we're talking about, thirty PSI.
Yeah, it's just.
And if you would, that's my brother, have that, be, be thirty PSI, but, well, um, yeah, I think, do you give a vote, Dave, is that, that one?
Yes.
So, so on the second page of that, that graph, and you can see, uh, that, along about September eleventh, September twelfth, there, uh, there was a, a severe change in the, the pressure there at ten sixteen, um, or it, it dropped and it hovered between ten and fifteen PSI for, for several days, uh, it bounced up and down some, but, but it, it sat as a significant difference from the rest of the, from the neighborhood. Um, there's one, one area there on, uh, September ninth, September tenth, where you can see, it's all three lines kind of flat out there for a while, uh, that, that was likely when the tank was, uh, was just kept full, and it was overflowing for a little bit for, for a few days, and here and there, for it's, y'all were using the, uh, tank to flush the systems there, pumping, pumping water all the way up into the tank and let it overflow the tank just to flush out there, uh, for a day or in the system for a little bit, so that's, that's why you see that, just flat out, stayed full for a while. that's why you see that just flat out, stay full for a while.
And all of, all of these readings were taken on the town side of the legal correct?
None, none of the, uh, the ones at the phones were taken at the stick it on the outside, yeah.
Okay. So these blue lines that go way down to below, uh, GPM are?
Those are at the, at the house on the customer side, too. So, yeah, what I, what I see in that is that you 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 definitively have an issue in water system pressure in that it's low in that area. But it it's been made much more severe with any kind of deficiency within the plumbing system at all, that that you'll see, the, uh, if if we had uh, a, a very high pressure within the water system, the sixty-seven PSI plus, uh, it it may not be noticeable at the house, but with the, with those type of plumbing issues, but when you're, you're already down there at the very bottom, any kind of, uh, additional pressure loss within the, within the plumbing, within the rest of the system, uh, it causes causes a lot of severe damage.
Yeah, just following this graph, you know, it evident, whatever the event was, what system-wide, because it only takes one location on this graph, the others didn't follow suit, is that correct?
That's, yes. Oh, it looks like it returns to, uh, it to some normal pressure there, and there's hope. It'd be interesting to, to repeat the test over a, for a period of time, et cetera, and see if there is any potential, if there's a uh, that there is, if, that some of that differentiation is caused by the change in the equipment itself, or just getting some kind of a a bad reading there, um, and our equipment's not perfect all the time, but it it certainly speaks to there being a, there being a challenge in that area.
Chris, do you remember when the meters were changed at these, um, big room houses? But but it was fairly recent, I mean, within the timeframe that there were concerns expressed?
Typically, within a, within a water system, if you're close to where the water tank is, the main source of water there, you really will not see much variation in pressure outside of where the, just that variation level on the time. There's the areas that are, you know, a long way away from the tank, that have, uh, much more significant changes in pressure ready to get it. Um, as you get peaks in demand and other, and you have fire flow situations in particular, and if you get further away from the tank, you got a really hard time making fire flow, so. As, as these, they really, the hydrants themselves follow that tank level very closely, um, you can see that clearly, you don't see this minimal impact from load break in the system, that, but, once you get into the house, you see, see some impacts in that.
I guess my question is, can we, um, do some more research and see the plan?
Um, yeah, yes, we can, we certainly can do that, uh, we can, we can do some additional, uh, additional testing with the, for their pressure monitors out in the system, similar to what we did here in other areas of the, uh, of the system, um, and try to get a bigger sample size, yeah, and, uh, it's the, uh, the ti- the timing of that is probably our our biggest concern there, is that the applications are due for this cycle, due September thirtieth. We're really short on time to deal with the, uh, the additional, uh, monitoring, and still make make us a little of that time, but we, if we, the, like, the board, we can certainly push, put funds submitted for your bid.
When, when was the next, when's the next cycle? The, and could we submit one for this cycle and one for the next?
You, you can submit one for this cycle and one for the, for the next, uh, the next cycle will be April thir- uh, thirtieth, um, with all the American Rescue Act funds and other things going on within the funding industry right now, so they, they, they may change that, I don't think, uh, that may be something a little sooner, but the numbers are different.
So I think if we have a chance to get some, we can get another.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
What you got?
Uh, Bill, what Bill said, another alternative possibly, I don't know if it exists, but can you file an application and then file amendment to the application?
Oh. You can't amend the application within, before it is scored and, uh, and the funding, you award it or or not funded, what's, once it's in, it's in. So, but you can potentially amend the, amend the project and, or, uh, you add add additional funds if it was still serving the same purpose of the original project.
Sounds like that was better than just have a second application.
Yeah.
I do want to know the, the full scope of the problem. And I hear you talk about wanting to test and this, this and that, but you can't just knock on doors and ask people how you want. You can't do that to supplement the tests, or can town staff do that, to have supplement the tests?
Yes, we can.
That would be two points of evidence that we could use to determine the, the area, the affected area.
Yeah, we, we can do that, um, Chris, I think we would have to have the information by, you said the supplemental is by September the thirtieth, so you would need the data that leave, or the resolution by.
But, I mean, that that might have to be the second rail.
Yeah, I think it's.
Oh, okay.
Knocking on doors takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
But I also think it 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 can confirm what your science shows, and it's, you know, just very simple questions that we sent out a survey or something. But then you have more evidence, we've determined, we have a better, more evidence, we can better determine the scope of the problem, and hopefully have a better submission.
I, I think your suggestion of a survey would be good, that way you'd have it on paper.
Send that out with the, with the base water, that's your water.
The people, the, the people you think are affected in that area, I think that'd be you'd have evidence of it being completely, versus someone who's coming in saying, okay, I helped with those people.
And, and on the loan slash grant, it would be a loan with the North County Division of Water, and we get twenty-five percent of principal forgiveness.
That's estimated at the time, so.
Yeah, but it's, most likely, it's gonna be at that level, there's a slim chance that they may find a way to, uh, to do a little bit more than that, the, uh, there's a couple of different programs under the, that, that same applications are, so they would still give us the best uh, split of the funds that they're able to come up.
And on the preliminary project summary, it says the estimated cost of improvements is a little over a thousand. Is that our cost after the twin top set forgiveness?
That's the total project cost.
Okay. So before?
Two hundred grand.
Yeah. Two hundred, we owe the six hundred. What are the, what, what's the term of the loan?
Uh, it's in twenty years, um, and it's a low, low interest, I believe their interest rate now is, uh, just over one percent.
Yeah, one, one and a half, it's somewhere in that range currently. And again, that can be paid off, uh, you know, once.
CARES Act or the.
Right.
If the board decided, yes, yes, use those funds to pay it off.
Would we be looking at the NC Division of Water on the second year round, or would we be looking at another agency to help fund that?
With the American Rescue Fund, uh, funds that are out there, I think that we want to keep our possibilities open there, uh, most like, we certainly consider going back to the digital infrastructure again, but, uh, there may, there may be another program or or door or a vote in the plane as well.
What action?
Yeah.
Uh, page number eighteen at the bottom. Yes, sir.
I'm like, and I'm going to approve the resolution for state drinking water, state revolving fund for water pressure projects in the home day.
All right.
Any questions? I'm afraid, uh, you have one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the American Rescue Plan, yes, page twenty-seven.
Mayor Proton, commissioners, uh, tonight, uh, as you have indicated on pages twenty-seven through thirty, uh, you have information that staff has provided, uh, regarding the initial ARP funds that the town received. As I had indicated, uh, we were stated to receive, uh, one million, three hundred, ten thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars. Uh, those funds did hit our bank account, and Tina has now moved those, or will be moving those, to a capital project fund, more so just a, a separate fund, uh, because we are supposed to keep those segregated from either the general fund or the water and sewer fund, uh, for better tracking and auditing. So you'll notice that we had a number of requests, uh, already submitted on page twenty-eight that Tina will be going over, uh, and there were certain categories that these funds were fit into as, as far as what they, or appropriations that could be made, uh, for these funds, and Tina's going to cover those, and, uh, one of them um, as well is the nonprofit funding, as we had talked about during the budget process, uh, is potentially we would be able to use these if they were not available during the, um, normal budget process and appropriations through the, the town funds. However, uh, in using the ARP funding for the nonprofits, uh, there are more stringent guidelines uh, for what the uses can be, so therefore, just as we had to look at with the CARES funding, we had to do the same thing, uh, concerning the ARP funds, and Tina's going to explain that, I'm just going to give you a little overview, so I'll turn back to you.
Okay, uh, I would mention the town did receive the first installment of the, um, American Rescue Plans on the virus state and local fiscal recovery fund, program funds, through the state. The purpose of the ARP is to, um, in quote, is to lay the foundation for a strong, equitable economic recovery by providing immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, and also address the systemic public health and economic challenges that may have be, may have contributed to more severe impacts of the pandemic. Um, recipient governments have the flexibility to turn and how best to use these payments from the fiscal recovery funds to meet the needs of their communities within the limitations of the eligible use category. They're encouraged to use the funding to respond to the direct and immediate needs of the pandemic and its negative economic impact and the needs of households and businesses that were negatively negatively and disproportionately impacted by the public market. So, the Department of Treasury released some guidance, and they've called it the interim final rule. They issued that back in July, I believe, but it's been recently. And after reviewing the guidance that we received for the use of this, the funds that they sent, the staff has the first round of recommendations for funding requests, um, and we also included a list of proposed infrastructure projects that are eligible for the ARP funding. Um, the items listed on page twenty-eight are the items that Roy referenced that they had been requested, but we were not able to fund them in the budget for year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We had categories that we had to fit each one of these requests into, so what we looked at were the public health and economic impact category, and we also looked at our infrastructure investment category. Um, according to the guidance, we ha- we only had so many categories, and we had to fit those items into, in there, because we will have to annually report what we spent of the, the ARP funds and how they fit into these categories. Um, so if you look at page twenty-eight of your handbook, you can kind of go down the list and see if you have any questions about any of the items that you see on page twenty-eight.
I got a question on the, uh, the second one, that emergency master school.
Right.
Does that have to be mobile, or can it be stationary? I'm sure.
Um, the one that was requested within the budget process was one of the most, like, the one we got, I guess we got them last year.
Yes.
Um, it's just, um, and that basically, so maybe around town, as, because we've already used it in several places in the past.
That was just, uh, as always, it would be nice to have one down at the common park, section, or there are all of them, and you can change it wherever you want, I was just, oh, they might not let you buy a section there.
Uh, Tina, a question on the, the categories list on page twenty-eight, uh, but just a more general question under the, maybe under the infrastructure, uh, section of the ARP. Is there maybe, hopefully, any money for our roads, particularly the St. Colle on Fifth?
Um, yeah, actually, if you look on page thirty, that is one of the things that we've listed, so what we, what we're starting with is, we wanted to go ahead and look at the budget, get guidance or get your, um, vote, I guess, to go ahead and do some of these items that were not budgeted, and our intention is to look at some of these infrastructure projects and review them, we would like to see how we could make the best use of our funds and of our dollars and see if there are any other funding sources out there, just to make, to maximize our dollars, and try to take care of as many of these projects as we can. So what we plan to do with attachment B on page thirty is to kind of review those projects and see how we can work those and how we could basically spend the rest of our money, and then with our second installment that's coming up, just kind of maximize.
How much do you answer, spend the second installment?
Uh, it, it should be the same, yeah, because it shouldn't.
Yes, sir, that's correct, uh, they'll be, it'll be made in two installments, uh, in two separate fiscal years, is my understanding, so.
So we should get enough, we've got one this July, we should get another one next.
Well, I mean, I know, you know, St. Colle Fifth is obviously a huge problem, just in general, the roads around the town are not good.
Right.
That's right, and and some of these funds potentially, I guess, and and we have looked at the, uh, Fifth Street as well and thought about the fact that we could use, uh, some of these funds for those repairs instead of having to pull it out of the power reserves that we have. Therefore, allowing more to be used toward, uh, that funding now, I'm not sure if we exactly were able to determine whether or not just an overlayment or paving, uh, could be funded uh, through these, uh, disappropriation, however, we know that Fifth Street, uh, includes the fact that we're having to replace culverts due to stormwater and other, that's, yes, sir, that's correct.
If, if you read the guy, if you read the guidance for infrastructure, it doesn't particularly say street, it it's more water sewer, um, it even references stormwater in a couple of places and broadband and that, so it doesn't specifically say street, so I'm not sure how much, you know. And like I said, this is an interim rule, and it may or may, we're not really expecting it to change, um, just because it's, you know, I don't, I don't have, well, it's over there, but it's, it's this thick, it was much earlier.
Like, we have the larger address broadband, that's connectivity in the town is terrible.
And that's certainly improving as well, um, and as you can see, uh, just with the, the balance of the initial payment, you know, we, we're only, uh, proposing, uh, currently four hundred and eight thousand dollars to be spent, uh, leaving, you know, nine hundred and two thousand of this, and again, the timeframe.
Uh, yeah, I didn't remember that, yeah, so the timeframe is decent, we have to have. We have to have the funds sent down by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we, we got time soon.
As much infrastructure work as this town needs, I'm sure we can spend.
I didn't think that was a problem, but yeah, we, we do have a lot of projects that we want to do. We have a lot of projects that we want to fund. And that's why we didn't really jump on, jump the gun and say, yeah, let's spend it on these big projects. We wanted to kind of take care of some of the smaller stuff and then sit back and look at how, how can we maximize our dollars to take care of some of these.
I wish we could do fine growth. On that water.
That one, if you look on attachment B, that is priority number two. And that was another thing on page thirty, that attachment B, we kind of prioritize what we think should, should be come first as we're reviewing. And attachment B is just for your review right now. Um, we're not really asking for a vote for that tonight.
Is Homewood Acres the number one? Is that the same thing we just talked about?
It, it is, yes.
Or forgive and worry and all it.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, or, uh, Jennifer, I have it.
Jennifer, did you put it up? Uh-huh, my friend.
And I'll, I can, I can read it for you. Um, so for our projects, the water pressure at Homewood Acres. Number two is water pressure at Pine Grove and Water Plant and Water Plant. Number three is sewer line replacement at Greensboro Avenue. Number four is a meter project. We'd like to upgrade to a satellite meter reading system. Number five is best new sewer line replacement from sixty-four to Seer Street. Number six is the dry dock sewer line replacement from their cleanout to the second street main sewer line. Number seven is each East Finch Sewer Line Replacement, East Finch to the Anka. Number eight is storm drain height at East Dolphin and South Sixth Avenue. Number nine is storm drain height at intersection of West Fourth and Dogwood. Next is the storm drain height at the wastewater treatment plant. Eleven is a water line replacement, um, at Craft Lane. And number twelve is South Side, where we'd like to raise it.
And those are some that Chris just currently had, uh, on the list that he and Tina had sat down and looked at. Again, these are not, uh, all inclusive. I mean, there are others that certainly can be added and looked at, uh, as well as they need to be brought to the board. At, at such a point in time that the board is ready to move forward with, uh, spending some additional, uh, money, uh, on some of these projects. So I know there's others that, that will come up, um, just such as many stormwater issues that we're currently having in certain areas. So, um, and, and there, there's going to be, as Commissioner Faithfully indicated, a lot of funding coming out through these appropriations coming out of Washington, uh, through various programs that we can apply for. And so those, many of those may cover a lot of these and we would not have to spend, uh, these current ARP funds on, on those. So, uh, the opportunities are going to be there and, uh, we'll just have to keep looking for those and then utilize these funds to, to the needs that we have where others aren't.
Oh, I want to go back to funny growth and not trying to put anybody on the spot, but does anybody know if that could be done in state? I'm trying to figure out how to say it in state.
There, there are potentially are two components to that project there, uh, that we're looking at, uh, that you could do those separately. And what we saw when those same pressure gauges that we, we showed for the other area is that it's, it's very distinct when the high service pumps, the water plants come on and off of where the document that the same show that, show that, uh, so do, um, you, the, the under condition would be to do it all at once, but to, you could take incremental improvements by at least probably putting, uh, in new high source pump, putting on variable frequency drive, so that they can ramp up and down to remove that spike issue from the system. And then the rest of that improvement is a similar booster pump system to what we're looking at for hundred acres, uh, to do the, uh, to, to increase the pressure in that high road bus or like both areas whole.
But we could stage it if we wanted to.
But you could break it into those, those two components anyway, is the pressure system, but the booster pump system that isolates that needs to be happened all at once, uh, to, to a large extent.
Tina, what was, what was the language you said, um, in the bill, you said it focused more on, uh, said infrastructure, focused more on stormwater? What was that language?
Uh, no, it, it really focused on water sewer, water sewer and broadband. It did reference stormwater maybe once or twice.
But mostly water and sewer.
Mostly water and sewer.
So do we have any other maintenance, other than the Homewood Acres and Pine Grove that we currently have water and sewer issues to your knowledge?
Yes, um, there are, there are other areas, um, a- as well as I said, this list is not all inclusive. I think these are some of the ones that were, um, on the priority list that Chris and then had. Um, that, but that's not to say that others can't be added and or the, as I just mentioned, we're going to have the other, uh, funding agencies and certainly pay for some of those.
I mean, it's just a good time for us to, you know, take care of our neighborhoods.
It is.
Water and sewer issues.
I agree. Yes, ma'am. On the bottom of page twenty-seven, if the board is in funding report, then that's.
Make a motion when we've written this request or attached with any.
Anyway.
Any questions? I'm in favor. You have a question?
Thank you, Bill. So tonight, um, just to bring the board up to date on a couple of items, the renovations at Town Hall are moving along. Uh, there have been a few delays, uh, based upon some plumbing issues that we encountered in the restrooms. Also, um, a, a slight variance in the entrance at the back, uh, when they were demoing the walls. And we've had to make some adjustments there, but, um, those have, have created a valid week and a week and a half based on, um, some of the materials that have had to be changed, uh, to the original renovation. And, um, but they stopped in today. We're going through the building. They assured us that they're going to stay on track. Try to keep us in the timeframe that we're, we're currently in, uh, even with some of the adjustments that'll, that'll be made. I think I mentioned, uh, a couple of weeks ago, maybe at the last meeting, that, uh, they have started working on Bowling Lane Park. I'm not sure who has had the opportunity to ride by there. See, uh, some.
Are you talking about the trimming or?
The trimming.
Tree.
Boat.
The trimming, have you?
Car tree.
Uh, at least from what I've observed, it, uh, it looks, it's starting to look better and, uh, it's a work in progress. So, uh, they, they are working on that, certainly trying to.
And to go along with that, we can give a shout out to our friends down there, because I think they played a big part in that, didn't they?
They did come and assist as well. Yes, they did.
They've done a big plus off on wood top.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes, they certainly did. Well, I do want to, um, mention to the board as well, and, uh, if you all have any comments or would like to make any recommendations. So if we are looking, uh, at whether or not we will have to move forward, um, with some type of, of guidelines, uh, reinstating some type of mask mandate, uh, within the town. Uh, certainly other local, local governments have done that. Uh, the county, uh, did reinstate, uh, theirs for all staff as well as inside of the county buildings. Uh, we, we've been waiting on and looking at what the state is doing, what they're requiring, uh, and moving forward from there. But I did want to let the board know that we have been mindful of that and certainly, uh, trying to conform to, to what others are doing and, and the security of, of staff as well as, um, the customers that come into the building as well. So, uh, at this point, uh, we're, we're still kind of staying as we are. Uh, but in the future, we may have to do that depending on, you know, what, how, how the situation progresses. The next meeting, of course, is Monday, August thirty. Uh, once again, this meeting, uh, will convene here, uh, in, in the library. If we need to move to Jordan Matthews, uh, the, uh, it will be available as it was before. And we will try and gauge ahead of time, uh, what we think that's going to look like, uh, and if we're going to need to do that. Uh, but the way that the, the meeting was recessed last time, uh, the board will need to come here first. And then if we, we will certainly go over there, but we will have everything, uh, ready to go, uh, in the event that, that that should happen. And that's all that we have.
William, you have any, is anyone on the board who have any? Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, my, my question, um, is related to, you know, with mass mandate or potential mass mandate. Um, are we thinking anything in terms of vaccination, you know, the companies are requiring their employees to be vaccinated, submit to regular testing?
Again, at, at this point, we've kind of tried to look at what other local governments are doing. And I, and I'm not aware, uh, just like the areas around us right now, of any that have acquired that. But certainly we are keeping that in mind, uh, but at this point, no, sir.
Cindy, uh, Donna Smith on Zoom, she had her hand raised.
Why?
I think she just wanted to say something.
Okay. Donna?
Hello, everyone.
Hey.
I would just like to say thank you very much for the, uh, nonprofit funding. Um, that is the program that I oversee, Pathway Hope, and that we are working hard to do quality, um, work and to really move people out of, um, any poverty into self-sustainability. Um, it's taken a little bit more time with families right now, but, um, we do see a bigger difference by spending a little bit more time with each family. So I just want you guys to know how much we appreciate your, um, your funding here and that we'll do our best work to, to make sure it's used properly. Thank you.
Thank you for helping the community. We really appreciate everyone that does that. Okay.
Code enforcement. There's a lady lives out on West Third Street. And, uh, she was upset, say the least, uh, high grass and weeds. That's a DOT street. And I, I think that might have been oversight. There's no way she could know it. That was on the right of way for DOT. That's, that's their responsibility.
How, how far out was?
Uh, you know where Duke Energy has that substation?
Yes.
Sign it.
Right.
There's no way she could know it. I mean, it's like, you know, this, and it was DOT's right of way and their responsibility.
That's a lot of restrictions on what a person can and can't do in their right of way. And, um, they, I gotta complain on it too. About that, um, because she felt like she says it was DOT's right of way, DOT's responsibility, she should have.
I just want to, you know, maybe our code enforcement don't know that some of our streets and roads are DOT. And I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't get out on Third Street and know it for nothing because you'd get one of them.
We have, we'll, we'll certainly check on that as well. I did want to mention, y'all have a thing to the board, and I'm glad that, that Donna brought that up, mentioned the nonprofits again. I think I forgot to mention when we were talking about those and the guidelines that, that had been put on this funding. There will be contracts that the nonprofits will have to sign this go-round based upon the fact of those guidelines and that they are used specifically for some type of COVID response under the different categories. So I did want to make everyone aware of that, uh, as well. There's, yes.
Were we required to follow up on how it's been used and forward that to, uh, American Rescue Plan?
Well, my understanding is as long as they sign the contract, that they will, um, you know, that we will have that available. So that'll be another outreach we'll have to make, um, to those, but. Isn't that, Tina, is that all that you had on that? Yes.
My question. I mean, I have a lot of pretty years. On six forty-one East First Street. By time of Ohio. There's a bunch of brush that I never signed. So what come to town ever pick that stuff up? It's been over a month.
Okay. Are you aware of that?
Both entries.
Six forty-one East First Street. I didn't wonder what come to town ever. Really haven't picked it up.
Well, I know. I know they have cut it up and put it up every side. Oh, I've been trying to look at it.
Is, is there anything else in there or is it just strictly brush?
Well, brush, they can cut some wood and thump it in there as well.
Did, did they separate it?
No.
Then that, it could be that they have been notified that they needed to break that out separately, but I, I don't know cases. Chris needs to look at that and see, but we will.
Uh, he did die a little bit. Looked bad.
Anyone else? Will you go home? The name is a junk.